I am called to order our special city council meeting workshop of December seventeen. First item on the agenda, actually second item on the agenda is discussion of the ACOG Surface Transportation Block Call for Projects Update for two thousand twenty and through twenty-three. Staff?
In October, on October one, we made a presentation when we were considering using local funds openly, and this is on Harrison. Yeah, see where this line is at.
Putting in the record low was late.
I heard they called order as I was getting in the elevator.
Turn it off.
I don't know.
Sound like a bottom stream at one at the top. There we go.
There we go.
Found it. So the base bid was just moving and filling in the Harrison Street Bridge was drainage immediately adjacent to it. Alternate number one was to go over to just east of Bob Powell's building and tie that in because he has some flooding issues in his building. Alternate number two was to go west to where we would end on the streetscape project, drainage project, so those two would tie together and bring that water over to this area.
It'll come in West, right?
Yeah, this is West here. Harrison and West.
Between the Harrison and West.
No, Oklahoma.
Isn't it?
This is Harrison and West.
All right, Harrison and West, so you're up the division over here then.
This is Division.
Right here.
This is Harrison. That's West. Okay. Okay, that'll figure that. Just these. Back to the roller?
Yes.
Okay. I had two different mouses in here. Again, the base bid, we talked about alternate number, an alternate number three or two. Alternate number three was if we wanted to add to the project with fully new pavement, sidewalks, period lighting from Bob Powell's building west to the future Division streetscape to match the streetscape designing look, so of course, some added cost to it. And that's what it would look like if you did the sidewalks and period lighting and redid the street. So if you look at base bid, the alternate one and two, the total was about one million one hundred thirty-nine thousand. There, in our ACOG application, there's two applications, divided into applications. The first one is Oklahoma and the second one is Harrison, which covers the same boundaries as this project, but it's a different amount, so I know we've got some people that like to check our math. So the difference between those projects, if you look at what we presented to you in October from Bob Powell's building back to the west, alternates one and two in the base bid was a million one hundred thirty-nine thousand. In our ACOG two application for that same area, it's one million one hundred twelve thousand, about twenty-seven thousand dollar difference. If you add in three, then it's about six hundred twenty-five thousand dollars difference. And remember, when we added in three, the sidewalks involved additional aesthetic improvements, particularly use of brick pavers, which greatly increases cost, lighting improvements, we were going in with period lighting, stormwater management and mobilization because you were going to do it in stages, added to the cost. Storms are designed, the way we were doing it before, where it's a standalone project, required more depth on the stormwater serves. And then on contingency, we had contingency in our, when we were looking at funded it locally, but when you do it through ACOG and ODOT, you can't put contingency. So I just wanted, if somebody compared those and said, well, that covers the same territory from Bob Powell's building back west to the Division, but it's a different amount, I just wanted you to understand why it was a different amount. So that's what we did in October, and at that meeting, it was decided by the city council to move forward with a third effort to apply for money from ACOG under their STBG grant program, which is ODOT funding. So there, now we're to the next meeting. This is ACOG one, which is from Oklahoma Avenue from Division streetscape, where it ends east.
What's this Division streetscape we keep talking about?
The streetscape project we've been trying to do.
Okay, yeah, yeah, all right. Still keep kicking that down the road.
Yes. Okay, and then over to Broad Street Intersection. That is eligible for funding. And then what we're calling ACOG two is the second application, they wanted us to divide it into two separate application, would be Harrison Avenue from, again, to the streetscape project over east of Bob Powell's building, and it would include the bridge removal. What's in this color is not eligible.
And the federal government's paying eighty percent of that, right?
Eighty percent of construction, not eighty percent of total project, eighty percent of construction. This is not eligible for the project or for federal funds. So anything in this shade, salmon color, would be a hundred percent local. If we get this application approved and the Harrison application approved, then we would need to look at doing this portion of Wentz to tie these two drainage projects together, or this has nowhere to go. So more than likely, if you, and we'll go through that, if this one and this one gets funded, then you're going to have to do this one to tie it, and it would be a hundred percent local.
You have that breakdown financially somewhere.
I do. So we're calling this local number one, right here. Then we're calling from Bob Powell's building over to Broad on Harrison, local number two, because we could tilt this pipe either direction to make the water flow this way to tie into this or this way. I don't think we can afford it, but from Harrison on Broad down to Springer and then back over to by the fire department, if we wanted to, in lieu of putting this extra water at the stadium faster and probably additional water when we have high rain events.
Bypass the part that goes underneath.
Correct. The new stormwater or the faster stormwater, we would bring this one. And then you wouldn't have to put a second pipe, this is a whiskey pipe in the hash bars, you wouldn't have to put another new pipe down the middle of the football field, baseball field, and then under the stadium. So we looked at that as an alternative as well.
So that would keep the water from flooding the football field?
Not totally, because it floods now, but it would not make it worse and probably make it somewhat better, because you would take more water from here and move it this way instead of down through.
But the odds of doing that are pretty nil.
Correct, because it costs.
A lot of water comes out of that avenue.
And cost, and we'll get in that bit. One final thing I'll point out on this slide, to compete with all of the bicycle paths that Oklahoma City had with us that got funded, we need as many points as possible. You get points for having things like sheer bicycle lanes, roundabouts. So you see that cost-wise, it doesn't add a lot, but you get points on Oklahoma at Wentz in Oklahoma is our oldest stop sign or stop light we have in town. If we were to put a roundabout there instead of having the stoplight, we would get points and maybe even some additional funding because it would be addressing, is emergency the right?
Safety.
Safety. Same thing down here on Harrison, the roundabout will give us more points. We're trying to be as competitive as possible for points. We all know that if that gets funded that way, we will have a issue that we will have to go through with the Historic Preservation Commission and with the State Historic Preservation Commission. But if we don't get the points to get funded, we don't have to worry about the issue anyway. So that's why we put those in there, we're trying to garner as many points to get the funding as we can. Okay, that's all of the projects, but I put it on separating them out so we can see. So Oklahoma ACOG one, which goes from Division over to Broad, construction cost is a million twenty-two thousand. This is not contingency, but this is ODOT's fee for monitoring and construction inspection. When you add that six percent in, you're at a million eighty-three. They fund eighty percent of the construction, so the grant would be for just over eight hundred and sixty-six thousand, and our local portion would be two sixteen.
Is that eighty percent included, include the six percent?
Yes. These are things that are not funded, and so you would have additional design fee because every time we have to redesign this, it costs more, and utility relocation is not included. So the total project, when you add that, is at one point two. So your eighty percent, when you look at the total project, your grant would pay seventy-two percent, and local would be twenty-eight percent. Okay. ACOG two, our second application, Harrison Avenue, same scenario when you add in the six percent for ODOT, it, eighty percent funding would be eight hundred and forty thousand would be side of the grant, two hundred and ten would be local share, and then add in the things that are not funded under the grant, your project would be one million one hundred and two thousand. So it would be seventy-six percent funded, total project, twenty-four percent local. Add those two together cumulative, you would get one, if both of them were funded, you'd get one point seven from the.
Grant.
Grant and six hundred and five thousand local. If, then you got both of those funded, you almost have to do Wentz to tie them together, no federal funding because it's not eligible, but that project costs four hundred and fifty-nine thousand. So then your total's two point seven, your grant's one point seven, and you're at a million six. So as we talked about a minute ago, if you looked at doing that a hundred percent local funding, do the bridge, do from Powell's building back without the period lighting and all that, we were right at one million dollar local money. So for the same amount of local money, you're getting the drainage improvements in Oklahoma.
If we get the, all these grants now?
Correct, correct. Okay, to go.
We're not done yet.
Today, well, we're just showing you, we don't know that there's funding to do these, but we just want to show you the whole thing. On Harrison, if you go over from Bob Powell's building east to Broad, that project, of course, is not eligible for funding from the STBG program. So your total cost would be seven hundred and forty-two thousand, that would be all local. Then if you go down Broad from Harrison to Springer and then back over to the fire department, that project itself is two hundred and, two point six million. I don't know that there's any funding to do that, but we just want to show you all that option. Right now, our concentration would be on these, these three projects. What I've done is, this scenario that you need to be aware of, we won't know until they award grants, but if they fund Oklahoma, but they don't fund ACOG two Harrison, well, then we got to do the bridge. So there's a chance that could happen because Oklahoma Avenue, quite frankly, it looks like it will score higher than the Harrison Avenue project.
Well, that's ridiculous.
Well, you could go his way.
It's just ridiculous.
But Harrison's the one that you're talking about doing the sidewalk improvements on, right?
Well, we took most of that out, but there is some sidewalks, but not as much. But it does include the bridge.
But does that add to, does that add to our points if we include the sidewalk?
We've tried to get as many points as we could. But anyway, if you do that, then this becomes a hundred percent funded, just like Wentz. Then you're looking at two million of local money and eight hundred and forty thousand dollars different than if that grant was funded. Now, we will have options at that time, once we know we could not do Oklahoma and Wentz and just come back to our base project and spend a million dollars instead of one point nine and just do it ourselves. So we would have options, but just want to make sure you understand, there are some scenarios out there beyond our control, and these are competitive grants. This is the Oklahoma project, in more detail, show you that we're replacing the existing pipe with the new pipe, the length of the project from the streetscape project over to Broad, and we're doing inlets and bringing it back over here and installing new inlets here and reconstructing the paving.
Going west, what are we gaining replacing twenty-four with twenty-four?
That's what was determined to be the design, but Bill, I'll let you answer that question.
The proposed twenty-four will take care of the, basically the flow that comes off of Division there, and the old pipe was just, it's pretty bad condition, so it is in improved condition.
And you can see that one is larger, it's thirty-six.
Yeah, I saw what that one was, but I didn't see the point in digging out twenty of that or something.
My understanding, and Bill can correct me, but the way the drainage basin falls, when you get by Division, the drainage basin divides and it goes to the west.
Essential, yes.
And then from Division, so you don't have much from Division going east. The town, county has a break there, then it falls back towards the railroad tracks towards the west. So you don't have as large a drainage basin on this side of Wentz as you do, because this goes all the way to the temple. This just goes to the crest up here and then it falls back the other way.
And that pipe's pretty old, and if we're going to do anything with the paving, they want us to replace the, the storm sewer, if you're going to put a new paving, because you'll be back in there tearing up the paving soon, so might as well replace it.
Okay, this is the Harrison Street project from just past Bob Powell's to address the flooding issue he has in his building, or at least give some relief. And it would put some new piping where the bridge is, takes the bridge out, does the roundabout, and you can see, we'll put in new inlets, replace the twenty-four inch pipe going this way, and eight foot by six foot pipe there. And I don't know that I have the size of that one on the draw. And then Wentz would be the one that would tie from the intersection of Oklahoma down to the bridge, so that water would have a place to go, and then some additional piping to, in the alleyways. And then this project would be Harrison back to Bob Powell's building. We're not thinking that project is going to get funded, so I won't go into much detail. And then, of course, the big project to bypass, taking the additional water down the stadium and football field and baseball field and under the stadium. And I showed you the cost of that. That's kind of where we're at on applications, and I'm sure Bill and Tenny will be able to address any questions you might have.
So, the roundabouts, it's kind of the first I'm hearing of the roundabouts. But do we have a breakdown of the cost of, just, I'm talking Harrison only disaster plan, okay, where we fix the bridge, that with roundabouts and that with traditional lighting?
There's not a traffic light right there on Harrison.
I know, would we want to have one there or not?
I don't think you would put a traffic light there.
Okay, so you just have a stop sign coming the other way. So in a traditional intersection, how much does it save by taking out the roundabout? And just fixing the bridge only, nothing else, nothing fancy, just fixing the bridge?
Oh, minimize the paving?
Fixing the bridge.
Well, basically.
Limiting the roundabout, fix the bridge.
Get the bridge back.
Just get the bridge so that somebody's not going to fall and die.
You could probably go back to your.
Right here. That's the base bid to do that project, the bridge.
Without the roundabout?
There's no roundabout there.
Roundabout just there to try to get us the grant.
No, I get that.
If we don't get it funded, we may have to do this.
The roundabout has been in about seven of the ten presentations we make so far, so it has been in there.
Well, but I'm talking about just the Harrison Street Bridge.
That would be this project right here.
Well, when I was involved in this before, it was, we were doing the whole park down there, and we had these bump outs coming up and all kinds, I mean, these posts coming up and all kinds of stuff, so I hadn't just been there in my meetings that I've had on these. So that's why I asked the question.
That would, just doing the bridge, the base bid, to just do the bid, if you did it with all local funds, would be nine hundred and seventeen thousand dollars.
I mean, that's, that's basically our worst case scenario.
Correct.
That's what I wanted to know, so there you go.
But if you get the two grants, you get all that?
For a million bucks.
Million bucks.
Right, I hear you. I'm not knocking the grants, I just want to know if.
I understand.
Because there's no sense in doing Oklahoma if we don't get a grant, if, in other words, if we get a grant on Oklahoma, but if you go back to those numbers and not Harrison, we got to scrap Oklahoma, because.
And that would be a decision that council could make at that time.
Right.
Right now, you just want to know whether or not we want to proceed.
Yes, we want to adopt the two resolutions to submit the two grant applications, the one on Harrison and one on Oklahoma.
I've got a question. Bill, on the, on the local project, that we would, that we would put in a forty-eight inch pipe between Oklahoma and Harrison? Am I reading that right?
Back on the original.
Wentz. Wentz right there.
Right there. On level one, I think that's all right.
So, isn't that going to even put more pressure on?
Yes, right here. Because that scenario, we were going to then take it off to the east, down Harrison, to Broad and down Broad, if that scenario worked.
Well, I'm not sure we got enough money to do that part.
I doubt you do.
Are we, are we creating a, are we creating a bigger problem?
Well, what'll happen is.
At the, at the bridge?
If that, okay, if, let's say you don't get funded.
Swimming pool.
Yeah, I mean, say we don't get funded, right? Then we'll have to come back and look at it the way we were looking at it back in October or September, whatever that was, and, and treat it that way with the drainage.
What they're doing is.
Much the engineering out of it, brings them forward.
You, you're addressing this Oklahoma.
That's not really.
Right now, this existing pipe, this hash bar, surcharge.
Right.
And when it surcharges, it goes out on the field.
Right.
How big is it?
That is about four foot.
Yeah, it's an odd shape. It's kind of a tattered shape.
Bugs are right out onto the, onto the field.
Yeah, it already goes there. So then we replace it with a forty-eight inch pipe or not, all the water's still going to the stadium.
Correct.
It's just going slow underneath it.
Just going slow. Just goes slower. On our streets, they're flooding, we're flooding the field anyway.
If you put this second one in, you're still going to flood the field just like you are now, but it's just going to get there quicker.
Does that cause damage? I mean, you know, obviously, you'd think it would.
We think it will spread out, and we'll have to look at it in more detail, but we think that it will spread out across the field, it dissipate, I mean, how many times do, if you get a five inch drainage, how many times do you go be out there playing football? And so we'd have time to dissipate before most games, most games.
I mean, chances are, they won't be out there playing football when it does surge.
But it already.
You better be there. They'd be surfing out of it.
But it already.
I guess my point is, there's no sense, in my mind, no sense doing this unless we can do this.
Well, then you don't want to do this because you don't have anywhere for it to go there.
We might as well do it while we're there, and get, get done with that part.
If you don't do this part, you're not.
I thought when we.
Maybe next time we take that step.
I thought in our last council meeting, when we decided to push, not the last one, but when we decided to push and wait for the grant, which is what we're doing right now, that was going to cover Wentz. Obviously, it's not, because it's not covering between the two at all.
Well, that grant application you're talking about had all of the.
James Grant went in the one end, okay, somehow or another, you know, we got this area that, how much is that between the two? Million bucks or four hundred?
You're talking about all of them?
No, between the two, the Wentz, right between the two.
Do what we're doing there only.
Four hundred and fifty-nine.
Four hundred and fifty.
I thought that was going to be in a grant, but it's not.
We tried, but they told us it wasn't eligible.
Yeah. Well, what it is, Oklahoma is eligible because it's a functionally classified roadway, and then Harrison is eligible at the bridge because it's under a special bridge classification. It's a, it's a, a bridge has been, what's the word, to not to contribute, support rating, and so we can do the tapers from the bridge each direction, and then obviously, they, in the past, they thought we could come down Wentz, but they said, this time they're telling us it's going to really hurt the application, might even kick out the Oklahoma section if we included the Wentz portion. They didn't think it was fundable, so, you know, from the intersection south, and that's why we didn't put it in there, and it would just probably kill everything with Oklahoma if we tried it.
But I see the sense in going ahead while you've got everything else torn up and replacing that too.
And then again, if you get the two grants, when you add Wentz in, we're still, well, we're funding a million dollars.
Yeah.
So. So all you got to do is get us the grants, we're good to go.
That's Tenny's job.
Well, we looked at you, you didn't pass it.
You're doing the grants?
Between the.
They're passing the grants.
It's all we have.
There is in the grant and, and.
It's a combination.
Pretty much added everything into this project, whether it's benches, whether it's.
Whatever, yeah.
Roundabouts. So let me ask you a question, how's this going to look? Let's say the whole thing goes through, we do, it's a million dollars, sitting in there, we've got these fancy roundabouts and all this stuff hanging out down there, and nothing happens with this Division streetscape thing, because that thing has been kicked ever since, and something always seems to interfere with that project. So now we've got a whole one side of town that is totally different than the other side of town. How does that tie historically?
It would be totally different.
It's be totally different.
We won't have a slalom cones on Harrison.
We will. It'll be totally different, okay? So how does that work?
Well, even if the streetscape project on Division's done, you would not have roundabouts.
Right, no, I understand that.
And that's not unusual for one side of town to have roundabouts and not. I mean, when you look at, this would be my opinion, I'm sure it would vary from others, but when you look at the historic, you said, of Oklahoma and Harrison, say if you're standing at Second Street here, and you look down Oklahoma. And that's not unusual for one side of town to have roundabouts and not. I mean, when you look at, this would be my opinion, I'm sure it would vary from others, but when you look at the historic, you said, of Oklahoma and Harrison, say if you're standing at Second Street here, and you look down Oklahoma or you look down Harrison, you won't even be able to see the roundabouts.
Right, I get that. I'm just saying aesthetically, they'll be there. Okay, and so how does that, forget that the Streetscape may or may not be done, how did the roundabouts affect the whole, how does it tie in? I just don't see it, how it ties into any. I understand the point, probably, I understand that.
It'll be an issue we have to address in the future.
Kind of like what we've got right now, only it's just not code.
What, what the management be also is that we could look at coming back and putting the ballards in so that when they close out for pre-game activities, you could keep cars from driving into the crowd, which last year, we almost had one drive into the crowd and give a more secure environment by using the roundabout and a series of ballards.
So getting back to the roundabout, right now on Harrison, we have nothing at the bridge. But now we're going to create a roundabout scenario, right? Or you're talking about going down, it's going to be actually next to Willoughby's.
Little bit west of there.
Just east of Eye Clinic.
It's by the parking lot.
This is more, this is more the intersection right here, I think.
Yeah.
I don't get that whole points, I don't get it.
I get the points, but I'm going to cost. How many, we forgot the points for a minute, when we went to traditional intersections at Wentz in Oklahoma, and we forgot that whole thing. How much are we cutting out of the whole end of the day that, and we still got the grant?
Again, if we go back.
But we don't get the grant, we don't get points.
I don't know that the roundabouts are going to keep us from getting a grant or not.
They said they're worth points.
I understand they're worth points, how many? So I'm trying to find out. I'm talking about how many damn points.
Ask that.
That's what I'm wondering, how many points are a roundabout?
I can't remember.
They throw the, I think, four, roughly four points in there, I believe it was with the roundabouts.
It helped us, I mean.
You get.
We're trying to get from seventy to eighty.
We're competing with.
That's, I guess, the real question, is what, you know, four points, it seems like much.
We don't think that it will get funded without those points.
Who don't? Because of experience, I guess.
Well, yeah.
By looking at the score sheets.
By looking at the score sheets.
And again, you know, we are competing with Edmond, Oklahoma City and Norman. The ones with the traffic, the ones with the demand, they score higher. And Oklahoma City and Norman have some pretty, you know, exotic, well, they have their traffic volume, it's just.
I get that.
It's amazing, so, you know, last year, those three got the, or Edmond, Oklahoma City got the lion shit. They might have got eighty percent of it last year.
Oklahoma City did.
And so if they score good again, I don't know. There's no guarantee, but we, we lose every grant we don't apply for.
Right.
So, but I think we stand a chance, really do. And we put together a package that we feel like is the best with what we have to work with.
How many points normally Wentz?
Well, usually around seventy Wentz, sixty-five to seventy, and this year they're saying, well, because Oklahoma City and Edmond and Norman.
Got to get eighty.
Yes.
It's got to be overwhelming now.
They have figured out, they're putting them in projects that are playing to the, to the criteria.
I mean, just the last year. I mean, there's not much we can, because we don't have the traffic problems.
ADTs was the biggest factor, is what we found.
What's that?
The average daily traffic counts.
So if we had ten thousand cars going down Harrison, Oklahoma, we'd get it. But if we had ten thousand cars going down Harrison, Oklahoma, we'd have a lot of good things.
Well, I saw that traffic count around here by my office.
Okay, any other questions?
I think we proceed.
So your, your third item here is asked for.
Item two and three are adopting a resolutions to apply for the two applications. One of them is ACOG 1, which is Oklahoma, and a resolution is ACOG 2, which is Harrison. So we would need to approve those two resolutions. We can do it now or we can do it in the meantime. We have them as action items on this agenda.
City Council agenda.
On the workshop agenda and the city council.
They're both of them.
Both here or both later.
I don't know what's going to change between now and seven fifteen, not a whole lot.
Well, make a motion that we tell them to proceed then.
So move.
Motion second, any other discussion?
Is that for both resolutions?
Yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. You announce approval by the council then to move forward with both A and B. Both two-thousand-nineteen dash twenty and two-thousand-nineteen dash twenty-one.
Thank you. That's all we had for the workshop.
Are we going to use that lady as well, what's her name?
From Ardmore.
For grants, her specialty area is community development, block grants.
She's retired. The teacher, really? She's retired.
Really?
Millie.
Millie.